All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to a meeting of the Sunnyvale Democratic Club. I'm Mike Saroni, the president. So we're gonna have a very interesting day today, hearing about, from our school board members, about back to school. First, we have a few announcements, and I hope everybody was able to get on, who tried to get on. I know there were some technical problems logging on initially, but I think we fixed that. So, the first announcement is, of course, the 17 by 17 K protests happening on Labor Day, September 1st, on El Camino Real, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Just out of curiosity, how many people attended the last protest? So, okay, I think you know what's involved. That was from Tesla Palo Alto to Tesla Sunnyvale, seven miles. It was wildly successful, I would say. The whole length of it was filled, and it got a lot of local and national attention. A very unique protest. The event on Labor Day expands the protest. It will be from Redwood City to Santa Clara, 17 miles. So, as you know, from the last event, this is the easiest and most effective protest ever. At minimum, you just go to El Camino, close to wherever you live, you don't have to go anywhere else, and join many like-minded neighbors for a two-hour street party, really. It's not a march, and so you just stay there, and your neighbors drive by in cars and honk their horns, and some took videos. We had some great videos of the whole length of the protest. So it should be a lot of fun. For the, for the DIMC club, this time, I identified a spot between Fair Oaks and Wolf, at 7:30 East El Camino Real. We'll send this out. It's, and I'll take the club banner there, and invite club members to come if you want to be gathering with someone you know. The, this spot has parking, grass, shade from trees, et cetera. And it's across the street from Pints of Joy Ice Cream, if you're interested in that. Could be a hot day, so. It's also between the two Tesla locations on El Camino. And so, we have included the flyer for this event in our email blast that Ambrosia sends out. This is what it looks like, and it's also on our website, and we have some, I printed out a few flyers over there, that you can take with you. So, the organizers are asking a couple things. First, if you're going to the protest, please RSVP. So, which, the link is on the flyer, and it's also on our website and on the emails. So, when you RSVP, you pick which segment you plan to be on, so they have an idea. People are, you know, loading up too much on one particular area, they can let us know, and we can try and distribute people around. Of course, we expect Sunnyvale to have the most participation of any city, and that was true last time. We did have the most people. So, so that's the first thing, RSVP, just so they have an idea of the distribution of people. They're also asking for volunteers to help distribute these flyers by, you know, you can email them to people, forward the email from the club, or post them on polls, bulletin boards, kiosks, et cetera, or hand them out in advance. I went to Ro'Kana's town meeting, and there were people there handing out these flyers at that, or Farmer's Market, whatever. So, so the image for the flyer is, again, on our email, also on the, on the club website, so you can print them out yourself if you want. So, if you can help that way, and, you know, that would be great. And we'll be posting, as we get closer to the event, any other logistical information. But, based on last time, it should be a great time for everybody, and hopefully we have a lot of people there, and increase the length, and get some more interest. And this is going on, these protests are going on all over the country, so. Well, this is still No Kings. I intend to wear my No Kings t-shirt, which I bought. So, these are still No Kings protests. Yeah. Guess maybe they don't say that on there. But, anyway, you know, the theme is protesting so many things, and certainly, even since June 14th, the last one, we have many, many more reasons to protest now than we did then. It's getting unbelievable. So, at least we wouldn't have the National Guard in our town, anyway. Yet, exactly, yeah. So, on another subject, our next meeting is September 20th, and as you may have heard, longtime Santa Clara County Assessor Larry Stone is stepping down. So, there's an election in November to pick his successor, and as we normally do, the DIMC club will have an endorsement meeting for county assessor at that September 20th And we will hear from candidates Yan Zhao, Nesa Fligor, and Rishi Kumar. So that's the September 20th meeting, and then, you know, we'll vote on an endorsement for that race. And also, you may have heard that Governor Newsom is planning to put new congressional maps on the November ballot to counter what Texas and other red states are doing, to increase Republican seats. So, also at this meeting, we're planning to have a pro-con discussion on this topic, and possibly ask for an endorsement vote for that. It should be an interesting meeting. Many things to say about that. And, one more announcement. Coming up on August 28th is the Leadership Sunnyvale 40th Anniversary Celebration. Tara, do you want to say a quick word about that?
(laughter)
Here, come on, come over here. Don't trip, don't trip, don't trip!
Okay, we will have a fabulous time. We're meeting at the downtown, at the community center ballroom. And so, everybody gets a, one of these lovely little glasses to take away, and we will be honoring not only Leadership Sunnyvale, and our founding executive director will be there. For those of you who may know Anne Hines, she will be there. But we are also honoring some people who have done a lot of work in service to community. And, of course, one of those is Larry Stone, for his lifetime of service to Sunnyvale. Our superintendent of Sunnyvale Schools, who's retiring, Michael Gallagher, Dr. McGallagher. And we have also Pilar Lorenzana, whom many of you may not know, but she has been an incredible voice for equity and housing in our valley. She is the vice president now of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. And, last but not least, is our very favorite Assembly Member, Patrick Aaron, who will be here. Yeah, and so, it's a pretty big event for us, for sure, and we're thrilled to have our 40th anniversary here, and we hope you all will join us. And, heck, it's a $40 donation for 40 years, right? A buck a year, how much? It's not bad, not bad at all, right? So, hope we can see you there.
Thanks, Tara. Oh, no, go around, go around. Okay, unless there's any announcements I missed, we'll go to the next part of the program. Where's, oh, there's Ambrosia. Okay. No, you can hop over.
Great, thanks, Mike. I'm Ambrosia, I think I've met most everyone here. I have students, my kids, in the Sunnyvale School District and Fremont Union High School District, and I'm very excited today to have helped to put this panel together. It was, I'm the communications director for the club, and when we talked about this meeting, we wanted to do something around education. We wanted to do something in partnership with our friends with Sunnyvale for Equity and Education. Yes, thank you, Tara. And we all know, on a good day, we hear on the news about public schools and how they're struggling, especially here in the state of California, how they're underfunded. And in this current political climate, it almost seems like schools are actually a target by the federal administration. So, we're really excited to have representation here from all of the school districts that service Sunnyvale, which many people are often surprised that there are indeed five, not just Sunnyvale schools, and not just our high school districts. But without further ado, I'd like to introduce Jessie Treckie from Sunnyvale with Equity and Education, who's agreed to moderate today. So, thank you, Jessie. I'll pass this on to you, and you can get us started.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. So, the format of this will be that we'll start off with a couple of questions that will go to everyone, and then I will start doing more specific questions that I'm just gonna ask to a couple of people, so that we can keep it going throughout the event. There will be, we have it planned for an hour of me asking questions, and then we'll take a quick break, just in case people need a break. And then we will do another half an hour of any audience questions. So, for each question, it would be great if you could do two minutes, and then you can just kind of keep it going, since we have a large panel. And Ambrosia will be keeping track, so she'll kind of flag you down if you start going too far. All right, I would just love to start with everyone just introducing themselves, and also the district that you represent.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. My name is Peggy Schenberster. I am a trustee for Sunnyvale School District. I am a mother of two that are starting first and fifth grades at Bishop Elementary in just two days. I was a teacher before I joined as a trustee. I taught in Mountain View in elementary and middle schools. I have also been involved with the Sunnyvale Democratic Club as an officer a couple of years ago, and one of the founding members of Sunnyvale for Equity and Education. I also have enjoyed serving on the Ed Foundation, Sunnyvale Education Foundation, for the last five years. I was the grants administrator and vice president as well, and now am serving at large. My trustee area is trustee area four, so that's roughly delineated by south of 101, north of, I guess that's Evelyn, with a little notch cut out. And this is Isabel Hugues Flem, which is trustee area two. That's on the, I guess, the west side with a little finger out on the east side, that is Isabel of Lawrence Expressway. So that's trustee area four. But, of course, on school boards, we represent the entire district. That's just the area that elects me. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, good afternoon. Buenas tardes. I am trustee Carpio Aguilar, and I was reflecting a few minutes ago, looking at that area in the room, because that's where I kind of said, yes, I am running. And that was 15 months ago, so I am still in, I guess, infancy age, when babies are like 15 months old. And on the board for Fremont Union High School, where I currently serve, I've, this is my eighth month that I'm starting, and I guess I should probably share, even though a lot of you may know me, I'm a teacher. I am a teacher at Columbia Middle School, which is a few blocks away from here. I have not been a teacher there for 43 years, but I have been a teacher for 43 years, and I represent, or at least the trustee area that has just been created, is trustee area two, which is the northernmost part of Sunnyvale, and it has two zip codes that had never had representation on the board. And that would be from, I think it's Maude, all the way up north to the Baylands. And so, I'm just learning a lot, and very excited to bring the expertise of a teacher into the discussions on the board. And I do have history also as an administrator of a school, so that helps me to kind of figure out, what does this mean in terms of negotiations with units, bargaining units? How does this, how does this feel if you're trying to balance a budget? And we have 9,000 students, so the needs are varied and many. It's a large district, but the teacher's lens is kind of like the microcosm of my classroom, where I might have 30 students, and you serve them all, and you love them all, and their needs are different. And so, I guess I should say, this is, I checked last night, we have two videos now of our board meetings, and I was very excited to see that, because we are getting there with ADA compliance, and now you can read with the subtitles. I need that at this age, I need to be able to read the subtitles, so we're very excited. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Lieberman. I am on the board of Santa Clara Unified School District. We serve just a small part of Sunnyvale Schools. My trustee area is trustee area seven. We, I'm in the area that borders Cupertino and Santa Clara, so my boundaries are Wolf Road, Homestead, Lawrence Expressway, and I think Old San Francisco, because my, my schools are, excuse me, I have three elementary schools and a middle school in my area, but our students filter into Santa Clara Unified when they graduate and go to high school. Our high schools are Wilcox and Santa Clara High. So I am, have been on the board five years. I'm the current board president, and we just started school on Wednesday, so we have kicked off our school year, and we have gone phone-free this year. So we have pouches that are magnetic, and the kids put their phones in them at the first period, and get them back at the end of the day. So, if you hear complaints from kids in that part of Sunnyvale, that's why. But I'm pleased to be here today, I'm looking forward to the conversation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alexander Guato. I represent trustee area two on the Foothill Deans Board of Trustees. I was appointed back in January to fill the very big shoes that were left behind by Patrick Aaron, who, as you all know, is elected to the State Assembly, and is now doing some really great work representing our community up in Sacramento. But I sought the appointment to the seat because I'm a product of the Foothill Deans Community College System. I started my college education at Deans, and that was hands-down the best educational decision that I made in my life. It changed my life in very, very many ways, and I know that's not actually really a unique experience. I don't, does anyone know or want to guess how many students go through Foothill and Deans every year? No? It's a little over 30,000, yeah. Which makes us not only the biggest community college district population-wise in Santa Clara County, but actually the largest higher education institution in terms of undergraduate population in Santa Clara County. So we have thousands of students every year whose lives are impacted by our community college system. And, so I want to bring that perspective as a former student, as someone who has lived that impact, to the board. And, like trustee Carpio, a fellow trustee area two trustee, just for a different district, I wanted to bring an educator's perspective to the district. I'm a faculty member at the Political Science Department over at San Jose State, and so I wanted to bring the perspective of someone who knows the, kind of, in-the-classroom needs, who knows the challenges facing faculty today, to the board as well. And so, I've been on the board about seven months. It's been a really exciting opportunity to bring those perspectives to the board, and also to represent the Sunnyvale community on the board. Trust area two is actually the largest electoral district within the city of Sunnyvale. It covers everything from the 237 up to the north, down to Remington in the south. So I have the distinction, the privilege of getting to represent more of Sunnyvale than any other local elected, other than the mayor of Sunnyvale, which, don't, don't tell Larry Klein I said that. It's been a huge privilege to serve on the board, and I'm really excited to share a bit about what we're doing, talk about some of the opportunities and challenges that we have, and also learn from our K-12 trustees about the work that they're doing every day. So, thank you all for having me.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sylvia Leong. I am serving on my seventh year with the Cupertino Union School District. This year, I'm serving as board clerk. CUSD covers six different cities, including Sunnyvale. We've got 23 schools, four of them are Sunnyvale schools, so we've got Stockton Meyer, Nimitz, West Valley, and Cupertino Middle. It's, we've got about 13,500 students. We're finally starting to stabilize our enrollment because of our TKers that are coming in this year. And, let's see, personally, I also serve on the statewide organization, the California School Boards Association, as a, on the Board of Directors, as a director-at-large for Asian Pacific Islander, which basically means I'm there to help represent API voices, students, trustees, and communities. And then I'm also pretty active in the Santa Clara County School Boards Association, where I'm one of the founding members of our unhoused Students Advocacy Committee. So happy to answer questions about that as well. And personally, mom of two, both my kids, one's in college, one just, one just IPO'd, he's income-producing offspring. And, and I just, I just came from lunch with them, with, both my kids came home for lunch, so they're on my mind right now, but yeah.
I'll just have you keep the mic there, and we'll come back this way, because we'll just, okay. So then, this is another question for all of you. What are your top three concerns for your district for this upcoming school year?
Is that on? Yes. So, if you're not familiar with the way that Cupertino's school district is funded, for a long time, we were one of the lowest-funded districts in the state of California, because of the way that the state funding formula works. This past year, this, this year, we've finally moved into what's called basic aid funding, which means that our property taxes, our local property taxes that are collected exceed the funding formula allocation. So, that's a good thing, that puts us closer to our neighboring districts. However, it's not much right now, so what we're called is kind of barely basic aid. It's about $5,000, it's, it's about $5 million more in property taxes, which if you spread that across our 13,500 students, ends up being about $400 per student, or $30 per student per month. So it's, it's not that much more. Unfortunately, we did have to have some layoffs this past year, because of some of the things that were happening federally, as well as what was happening with our own budget. So I think that's, that's really our biggest concern right now.
Well, I think certainly finances are a challenge, for Foothill Deans, I suspect, for many other districts as well. Like our friends over at Cupertino Unified, Foothill Deans also just made the transition to, to basic aid, which was one of the best timed things that could have possibly happened, because we were looking at running into a fiscal plateau that was really gonna cause a lot of problems for our, our district and our students. So, happy that our prayers, our hopes were answered on that front, but if, I'm thinking about kind of what's top of mind for me, and what are some of my top concerns, especially heading into the new school year, what really comes to me, to mind for me right now is protecting our institutions, protecting our students from what's happening at the national level right now, which I don't want to be sitting here talking about. We're a local government body, we should be focusing on local issues, we shouldn't be talking about what's happening at the national level. But I, the unfortunate reality is, what's happening, what's coming from the White House right now is having a deeply poisonous impact all across the board on our higher education system. And so, just as a couple of examples on how that's impacted us, you all probably heard about the sort of travel ban 2.0 that Trump put forward. So, in addition to the countries covered in the first travel ban, there were a few new ones, including Burma. Now, we have about 300 students at Foothill Deans, who are Burmese, who pretty much overnight found themselves in a position where if they went back home, if they went to visit family, to take care of relatives, they were not gonna be able to come back and finish their education in the United States. So, you know, I heard and saw firsthand students who were basically saying, look, if I'm in a position where I have to choose between continuing my education and going back home, I'm gonna have to drop my education, which is not a position any student should ever have to be in. Another thing that we're dealing with is the impacts of the budget bill that was recently passed, and just a slice of the many, many terrible things that bill is doing to higher education, is it decimated Pell Grants. And so, for the folks who don't know, Pell Grants are a lifeline to a lot of working students, to have access to a higher education, and that bill gutted our Pell Grants, slashed funding, tightened restrictions, made it harder for students to access. So, that's about 20% of community college students who are now having their Pell Grants completely eliminated, who are not gonna be able to continue their education as a result of that. So, again, I don't want to be talking about that. It should not be a concern for a local government body, but top of mind for me right now is, how do we protect our most vulnerable students, our low-income, our immigrant, our undocumented students, from the attacks that are being launched right now on our higher education
In our district, I would say, we are, we're also a basic aid district, but we are currently deficit spending in our district by about $30 million. And, so for us, right now, we need to right-size our budget. That is our plan, starting probably later in the fall. We have a brand-new superintendent this year, and so, once he kind of goes through his kind of listening and learning sessions, we'll sit down and have a board study session on, on what, what we need to do, and what are nice-to-haves, and what are need-to-haves, and there's gonna be some painful decisions that have to happen in the coming months to get us more fiscally responsible. Another concern for us is our immigrant population. We are starting to track week-to-week attendance to make sure that our immigrant families are coming to school. We're hearing from a lot of our families that they're just afraid to be out in public, because they don't, that you can't predict when ICE will show up at your site. So, we've trained all of our front-facing staff at our schools to know what to look for, and what to ask, and what the paperwork should look like if, if someone does come onto one of our campuses, but we're trying to make our campuses a safe space for all students, and we want kids to come to school. So, we're trying to do outreach there. And then, our third concern for us this year is closing our achievement gap for our unrepresented, our, our disadvantaged, and our children, our students of color, particularly our Hispanic students, tend to underperform at alarming levels. And so, getting that achievement gap closed in English, English language and mathematics is, is, is a focus for the board and our new superintendent, and figuring out what the obstacles are for those students, because a 40% gap in test scores between our Hispanic Latino students and, and other students is, is unacceptable, and there's a clear, gotta be a clear reason why. So, that's one of our main focuses this year as well.
So, is this working? Yes. We've heard it, I think I would just be adding to that, people worried about the funding. Fremont Union High School District is a basic aid district, so I don't think that is kind of top of the mind, but money is always atop of everybody's mind, whether it's correcting your deficit spending, or just figuring out how to deliver services better to the students and their families. And to that note, we are all feeling the angst and stress over immigration, and a lot of our students- and a lot of our students are expressing fear and their families are expressing fear. I go back to the classroom on Monday. I'm excited. So I'm like, you know, just putting everything in place in my classroom, really thinking about how my students will be feeling welcome. And I'm thinking, how can we do this, you know, at a systems level? Because it's something hard for a teacher to carry, for a district to carry, and that is coming from another level, like Mr. Gavton said. Like, this is not really our sphere of influence, but we have to do everything we can to make people feel welcome and safe and protected. So that's on our minds and it's on our students' and their families' minds. One of the things that might only be on my mind, and I'm making this disclaimer, is access. And I recall that I was in an interview here, again, a few months back, and I was talking about how access is something that I would be worried about. And you might be thinking, well, that's a term that is like a concept. How do you make that tangible? Access to information from our district that needs to be publicized in a way that everybody gets it in a timely manner and that they can do something with that information. And access, geographically speaking. And that means getting people to where they need to be in a way that isn't putting an onus or onerous ask on them. So while a lot of us are thinking, "Well, good thing that we have the VTA bus pass now for anybody." Oh, okay, all right. Well, then I will not spoil it. Okay, well, access in general. And I think we're on the right path, and so I'm glad that you corrected me. We're on the right path. And we need to keep offering people hope because hope is not a strategy, but it sure helps. And so we need to kind of hold each other together and our students right now, I guess. Thank you.
For Sunnyvale School District, we're concerned about student wellness. That's priorities, reassuring our students and families that, making sure that there is a safe nurturing environment for everyone, regardless of race, documentation, identity. This is number one priority for us, to make sure that our students, our families feel safe sending our kids to school. We're also a new governance team, so we just hired a new superintendent as well. He's about six weeks in. I am new as of, what, eight months ago? And we also appointed a new trustee a few months ago. So half of us, that's the governance team, it's like the board members and the superintendent together, half of us are new. So I think that we really, at this time, want to focus on building a governance team that is effective, that communicates well, that has clarity of purpose. I've been the VP this year, and so I've been included in agenda planning and packet review sessions. So I'm getting a better understanding of how we work and how we should work. And I think that there is a lot to do in terms of relationship building, but also, you know, for the greater in-service of the students for this district, how can we, as a team, work together for that end? Also, we just really want to make really good decisions in this time of, you know, economic uncertainty and unknown or perhaps expiring revenue. Like, having the most bang for the buck, right? In terms of making decisions that are impactful and that will ensure that we have students, we are preparing our students for high school and beyond, as I promised.
Great. Thank you so much. You all have touched on topics that will also come up, so that's good. We'll get to dive into some of those issues a little bit more. So one that Pat mentioned was access. So getting students to school is a challenge for any district. And each of your districts seems to have different approaches. So Bonnie, can you talk about Santa Clara's approach using busing for some neighborhoods and any other techniques you're using to discourage car travel?
Sure. Okay, so in our district, our transportation services are focused mainly on our special education students and our underserved populations. So, and kind of to prevent unsafe pedestrian and biking traffic. So we have students that live north of 101, and if they attend a school that's south of 101, then we will provide busing services for them so that they don't have to cross a major throughway. But we don't currently have a transportation program that focuses on decreasing vehicular traffic. We've discussed the environmental benefit of that, but unfortunately, it's cost prohibitive for us to provide it. We would love to be able to bus students to school every day. But a new school bus can cost anywhere from $100,000 to $200,000. And an electric bus can cost up to about $400,000. And that's just to get the bus. So that doesn't include maintenance and hiring additional staff to, you know, make sure they're running, and then additional bus drivers, which are currently impossible to find. We are understaffed in bus drivers. So if you know anyone, they can apply. So it just doesn't make sense financially for us to expand our transportation program because it would probably mean taking money away from impacting classrooms. So this is kind of where funding comes into play, where all the things we would like to do, we can't do because we need to prioritize educating students, even though getting them to school, we need to get them to school, but it really is cost prohibitive for us. So we focus on other ways of getting students safely to school with crossing guard programs and trying to encourage parents to take a more, you know, if they're able to take a more active role in getting their kids to school by walking them there. But we just don't, we can't do busing. It's unfortunate, but we can't afford it. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Sylvia, I believe that Cupertino focuses on biking and walking and has quite a robust program with that. Can you talk about what you have and what is planned?
Yeah, so similar to Santa Clara, we also don't do transportation other than for our special education students. Really, because we're across six different cities and every city has their own Safe Routes to School program, the programs kind of vary across the district. And what I've seen in the time that I've been there, and even before I was on the board, I was part of Safety Patrol and part of Safe Routes to School as a parent. That kind of walking and biking is really better caught than taught. It's about building a culture at each of your schools. And our principals do a great job of this. I actually attended a couple of first-day principals' coffees on Thursday and Friday because we started school last week. And just the way that the principals are able to say, "Hey, this is an opportunity." Like, one of the principals was like, "If you park here, you get 537 steps, you know, extra if you just park at this little cul-de-sac over here instead of trying to go through the driveway." And so it really is a matter of having leadership at each of your sites and having champions, having parents who are willing to put in the work. Some of the schools do, they call it a valet program. So like, the fourth and fifth graders are the ones who are opening the doors and letting the kids out. Or they do, with Cupertino, they do a really good, the city of Cupertino does a great partnership with us where they will come and they'll give stickers, they'll give prizes, there'll be like little toys and things like that as the kids are coming in, and they'll make a big deal about it. San Jose, we've had, you know, a little bit more challenges there in terms of trying to get some partnerships going. Sunnyvale, it's unfortunately not as strong of a program in Sunnyvale. I'm hoping that maybe the city can do a little bit more with that. That would be great, as I'm looking at council members.
Thank you. Pat, FU HSD has some distinct challenges regarding getting kids to school. Can you give everyone here some background, current programs, and what you hope the district will do in the future?
Well, thank you, and also you caught me when I was like, "My heart is here." How do we get students to school? Because you have a sense of belonging when you are there, when you are so distant from a place that it becomes grueling just to get there. You don't feel very connected to that place. In climate weather can be a thing here in Sunnyvale. It's a wonderful place to live, but you have winters where it's rainy and getting to school demands a lot of you, especially if you're a high school student and people see you as completely incapable of getting to school on time on your own. And if it's really, really hot, then you still have to fend for yourself while you're traversing six miles as a crow flies to get to school. So the sense of belonging is diminished the further you live from the place where you need to be. What has the district already done in the short time that I've been there? They've already started with a lot of listening to the community, and that is a positive. Listening to the community is something that I think that our district does well. I wish the voices that need the services the most would be more present about this because there are many whose voices have not yet been heard. So if you now live north of 101, you automatically are eligible for a bus pass. Whereas before, you had to fill out a form and it became, again, another imposition on the student or the family to be able to get that monthly bus pass. And we have removed that friction from the system where now you are eligible. You still have to go get it, and it is still monthly. And you might miss a day or two in between when the month comes in and you forgot. You're a high school student. You have a lot on your mind. So in an ideal world, I would think that just having your student ID should qualify you to get on any of the services of VTA, to go wherever you need to go, not just to school. But an extension of school is using public transportation to diminish your carbon footprint and learning to be just streetwise in how you get off the bus and how you go places, especially as a teenager, and you can ride your bike or walk, like you said, how many more steps? However, me as a person, I will say this as a person right now, I think we're having the wrong conversation trying to figure out bus passes. The right conversation is there needs to be a school in northern Sunnyvale. And it needs to happen the sooner the better because we need to address the injustice that was caused on our community over 40 years ago. And nobody's talking about that. We're all figuring out bus passes. But I do think that the fact that they're there and it's easier now. But I'm thinking as a teacher, when I received students in my classroom, when we had to figure out how to cross dangerous sections of freeways or Central Expressway or whatever to get to school, they've already had like one or two hours of themselves out in the world before they even get to school. And so why is that? And how are we helping to perpetuate that by not talking about it? So here I am, as a teacher, talking about, "We need a school in northern Sunnyvale."
Thank you, Pat. All right, switching topics to immigration. Alexandra, you mentioned this earlier. It's a tense time for many students and families in the area with the nationwide increase in ICE activity. Would you describe what your district's policy is regarding undocumented students and how you protect students while they're at school?
Yeah, unequivocal support is how I would describe our policy when it comes to supporting undocumented students. It's a core value, I think, of any community college, and especially at Fodil D'Anza, that we close our doors to nobody. We don't discriminate. And we believe it's a fundamental value that everybody has a right to a college education, no matter who you are, where you're from, what your immigration status is. And so a couple of things we've done in the last few months to translate those values into action. Back in April, my board colleagues and I voted unanimously to declare Fodil D'Anza Sanctuary District. And what that means is communicating to the students that district faculty and staff will not cooperate with ICE. District resources, district facilities, district staff, district time, our law enforcement, our campus police, none of them will cooperate with immigration enforcement attempts targeting our students. And one thing I was really passionate about was making sure this was not just a declaration, right? It was something that we put into practice. And so after passing that policy, we launched a series of trainings for our faculty and for our staff talking about, "Well, what does this look like in practice, right? What do you do if ICE shows up on your campus at your classroom? Who do you call? How do you protect the students that they're targeting?" Another thing I was really passionate about was, you know, it's one thing to protect students once ICE gets there, but we also know that the impact of immigration enforcement is not just the enforcement itself, it's the fear of the enforcement, right? And so if you're a professor, if you're a faculty member, and you have a student who is missing class, who's missing assignments because they're undocumented and they're afraid that ICE is going to look them up, see where they go to school, see what classes they're taking, and show up at their classroom. If you've got a student who's in that position, who has that very legitimate fear, how can you, as a faculty member, support them? And how can you work with them to make sure that that fear is not going to stop them from achieving their educational goals at Fodil D'Anza? So that's something I've been really proud to see as well. And of course, for our students, right? We want to make sure that our students know all the resources, all the services that are available to them, all the protections that are available to them. And so since the Trump administration came in and started ramping up ICE activity, we've been partnering with some of the local community organizations that organize around immigration and putting together webinars, in-person trainings on things like Know Your Rights, KWR trainings, on things like legal pathways to citizenship, on legal defense options, right? If you're a student and either you or a family member is facing deportation, facing immigration enforcement, what options do you have? What services are available to you to help support your legal defense options? And one thing I'll add to that, just really quick and something that I'm very happy about, is we have a really active student body at Fodil D'Anza. We have organizations like Hefus, which is the Undocumented Student Organization at D'Anza. So a lot of these changes were not just kind of top-down directives. They were actually built from the ground up in partnership with, in many cases, by the students. And I think that plays a huge role as well. When we're talking about protecting our undocumented students, our immigrant students, we work in partnership with them to build those protections.
I'm really glad I selected you for that question. Awesome. All right, Peggy, would you mind talking about Sunnyvale School District? How are they handling the same threat for students and families while at school or during pickup and drop-off, as Bonnie mentioned, which can be a pretty scary time?
Yeah, we're also very concerned about the threats for our immigrant communities. The district's being proactive in understanding that, you know, we have an obligation and a responsibility to support all of our students. As leaders here and in our district, we need to speak up in support of our students and families. Our superintendent, Dr. Crosswade, put out a message yesterday to families that I and others felt was very encouraging in terms of communicating with families and also with staff about the importance of a safe and nurturing environment, welcoming environment for our schools, and also building those positive relationships, you know, between the schools and the families to ensure that that is indeed the sense, is that we are welcoming, we want you to be here, you are safe here. We're, of course, going to have staff visible in the prominent locations for pickup and drop-off to reassure, also in a welcoming way, right? That we want your students here, you are safe here. And we'll be monitoring attendance, as I'm sure every school district will be doing, to ensure that our students are getting to school. In addition, the superintendent and board members have been engaging with the Immigrant Protection and Empowerment Network, which is IPEN, and other agencies to raise awareness and build capacity within our staff and within the community. And IPEN is also supportive of working with families to, you know, make sure that there are safe passages for families and students getting to school. Dr. Crosswade has also partnered directly with Senator Wahab in providing updated training to parents in both Spanish and English. So that will be on August 26 at 6:30. It is open to everyone, not just our community. And that would help, you know, families understand their rights and how they can prepare for maybe worst-case scenarios and the expectations of us as a district. And just really a supportive communication and hopefully empowerment for our families and our community. So given what we've seen, we also need to do what Alexandra has referenced in terms of reevaluating our policies and our protocols and developing stricter guidelines whereby agencies like Homeland Security, some Homeland, ICE, basically Homeland Security. Okay, where ICE will not be allowed onto our campuses where they have to communicate, contact the superintendent's office directly and not putting that onus on, like, the administrators at the school sites.
All right. Speaking of this interesting time with the federal government, Bonnie, how is your district preparing for potential loss of federal funding and even the potential closing of the Department of Education?
So in terms of funding...
So in terms of funding, it won't impact our budget a whole lot. We don't get a significant amount of federal monies. So we won't see much of a difference in our, in our funding. In terms of the Department of Education, so we're in a kind of a wait-and-see approach with that because it does require an act of Congress to dismantle the department. And so we're kind of, kind of waiting around to see, I mean, I think it... I mean, I'm speaking for myself, the likelihood of that actually passing both houses, I think, is somewhat small, given the filibustering abilities. But if it, if it were to happen, I think it would put a lot more onus on local, state and government, local and state governments to kind of take ownership of the things that the federal government does do in terms of civil rights protections and Title IX protections as well. I think for districts that have high numbers of economically disadvantaged students that rely on that funding, it's going to be a major, major problem. We, our district does have, have that population, but it would be up to, I would think, the states to kind of absorb that and, and try to work that into a budget, which I'm sure wouldn't, would not happen very readily. But it's kind of a hard, it's a hard question to answer.
You're welcome.
Because most, I would say that a lot of people don't understand what exactly the Department of Education does and how much influence they have on local education agencies. And I, in some ways, I kind of would love to see more local control over those things because we know our communities, we know our students, we know our families. The main obstacle obviously is money. And, but I think questioning kind of what the role of the federal government is in K-12 education, what their role should be and how much local control would be, would be beneficial. And then if the Department of Education were to go away, how local government and state government would take over that, that role, I think, is, is the more critical question because unfortunately, everything comes down to money.
Yeah, absolutely. Sylvie, I know Cupertino, you mentioned this earlier, that Cupertino has had challenges with money already. How does the federal funding affect your school if it does or doesn't?
So I think one thing to keep in mind is here in California, most of our school districts aren't getting that much of our percentage of our budget from the federal funding. On average, I would say it's like 5% or less just across the whole state. In Cupertino specifically, about 2.3% of our budget comes from federal funding. That roughly is about 6.7 million for us and that's broken up into three kind of buckets. So the big bucket is special education, then there's nutrition services, which is like reimbursements for the school lunches. And then there's what's called title funding. So if you're familiar with Title I, II, III, IV, those are all the different special categories that are focused on students that are most vulnerable, students from special populations. And so Title I is like for the students to qualify for free and reduced lunch. Title II is professional development for staff, for educators to help specific populations. Title III is for our English learner students and for immigrants, immigrant students. And then Title IV is like after-school programs, extracurriculars, sports, those are the things that support like, you know, puberty ed, you know, like parent ed, Project Cornerstone, all of those additional holistic education things that help students thrive. And so if you've been following the news, you might know that in July, the Department of Ed declared that they were withholding all of the title funding. So that was about $7 billion for the entire nation. It was unprecedented because that already had been appropriated by Congress. But if you've also been following, Congress did, or the Senate voted maybe two or three weeks ago to release it. So the good news is that CDE, the California Department of Education, has already confirmed that they've received the funding, which is great. And the way it works is that we as districts, we then submit our expenses to them. So that should be coming to us for this current year. The unfortunate news is we've been told that the Department of Ed, basically Trump has said to get rid of all of the immigrant funding. So Title III immigrant funding is being held in accrual right now. For us specifically, that's, that pays for 27 instructional assistants that are at each of our sites two hours a day. So that's a, that's a big impact for us to actually, and to specifically target immigrant students is so, it's, it's just, it's cruel beyond what I can even express. But I think, so that's something that we will have to be talking about as a, as a board, you know, everything is a priority. So, you know, does that mean that those positions will go away? We don't know, right? We need, or does it mean we have to shift money around to fund it and then something else has to be taken away, right? Because it's a finite amount of money. So that's an example.
Thank you so much. I'm going to skip down to another question. Peggy, as you know, Sunny, since you spoke, since she spoke about Title I, I thought I'd skip to you on my Title I question. So Peggy, as you know, Sunnyvale is a city with extreme income inequality. I believe seven or eight of the 10 of Sunnyvale schools are Title I or Title I eligible and because of the high percentages of low-income families. So schools have generally struggled under these circumstances. What is Sunnyvale School District doing to improve educational outcomes from, for students from lower socioeconomic backgrounds?
Yeah, that's a major priority for us. It has been for quite some time and we have unfortunately not seen the gains and closures and those gaps that we wanted to see. We are very hopeful with our new instructional leader in Dr. Crosswight that we can make some changes that will close that gap and really support all of our students. We have our updated strategic plan, which we're really good to lean in and make specific goals about in order to really push the system and change the system in order to serve students well. We have to revisit how our resources are allocated. We spend a lot of money on adults, honestly. We need to ensure that our most vulnerable students are getting the support that they need and that means like basic academic supports. And so that might also include removing some barriers in order to extend education like beyond the school day. So we are looking, we actually have a proposal to, to do some after-school support, which would also include, you know, tutoring, high-impact tutoring for our students of most need and also redesigning our transportation so that, again, removing that access. Our new superintendent is very, very excited and familiar with using data, purposefully, intentionally collecting and using data in that way, disaggregating the data and developing systems to monitor instructional outcomes and making sure that teachers have what they need to meet those, to meet those standards, using the curriculum we have, but also giving teachers that can, that professional trust, right? That they can teach our students, they know our students the best. We're looking to join networks so that we can with, for example, our high school district, develop some articulation planning in order to support our students as they go from our district to theirs. And also there's a great program, a network where we could develop within our own school district to have our teachers communicating each other, working on, with each other, for example, in elementary literacy and making sure that we are really intentional about that collaboration and, and we can support our students better by working together. Finally, I think just having partnerships, leaning into those partnerships in our community, involving parents more. We are at like a heart of innovation here in Silicon Valley and I, I think, and our superintendent thinks that we, there are a lot of partnerships that we can form in order to best support our students, you know, with declining funds. We all need to be a little more creative and innovative and I think we're moving that way.
Thank you. Okay, my last individual question is for Alexandra and it's not what I had sent you, so I'm sorry. Because you already talked so much about the topic, I'm going to switch. Would you talk a little bit about some of the really special things that Deansha and Foothill have been doing for students from lower socioeconomic situations such as your unhoused population and that type of thing?
I'm actually glad you changed it up because I've been burning to talk about that. So one thing I'm a really big believer of is caring for the whole student, right? I think as a district, as a trustee, our responsibility goes beyond the classroom and beyond the campus to making sure that students feel safe, feel supported as a whole, right, as a whole person. And so to get to your question in particular around homelessness and some of the struggles that our students have, it's something like a fifth of our students at Foothill Deansha who are homeless right now. And on top of that, another, about 45% who are housing insecure. And that means someone who is right at the cusp of homelessness, right? Someone who is one bad break, one missed paycheck, one medical emergency away from potentially ending up on the streets. We've got about half, a little under half of our student population who are food insecure, which means students who are going to class hungry, who are potentially going the whole day without having anything to eat. And so when it comes to caring for the student, I mean, to me, it's unconscionable that here in one of the wealthiest places in the whole world, we have students who have to choose between, you know, am I going to get a college education or am I going to have a roof over my head? Or, you know, am I going to buy textbooks for this upcoming semester or am I going to have groceries for the rest of the month? So traditionally trustees and college districts have not seen these as kind of their bailiwick, right? Their, their focus has been on academic achievement and scholastic aspect of it, which is very much the foundation of it. But these things all impact those things. And so Foothill Deansha, I think, has been increasingly stepping beyond what is traditional because we recognize that the traditional role is no longer working. And so one thing I'm really excited about is we have our first student housing coming online in September, so just next month. It's going to be in Cupertino, it's a five, eight-minute walk away from the campus at Deansha and it's going to have room for over 400 students. And the, there's a spectrum of units available and I'm going to set out a comparison, all right? San Jose State, which I love San Jose State, I teach at San Jose State, I'm not going to say anything bad about San Jose State, but the most affordable dorm option for a student at San Jose State is about $1,700. At our student housing, it's going to start at $1,000. So I'm really excited for that because I think it's going to make a big difference for students who right now are having a really hard time going to school, affording school and outside of school, having a really hard time making ends, right, keeping a roof over their head. Those are the kinds of things where I think districts need to be more and more willing to step up and be part of the solution. I'm also a big believer that we need to be part of regional solutions on those issues as well. And so one thing I'm really passionate about and something I'm excited to do is look at ways that we can partner with city council members, partner with our state legislators, partner with our, our fellow K through 12 trustees, right, folks who are up here today. How we can work together to create regional solutions to some of these issues because it isn't just our issue, right? Housing, homelessness, economic inequity, inequality, these are challenges across the board in Santa Clara County. And so it's incumbent on all of us to work together and say, how can we all be part of a regional solution so that no kid has to go hungry, no kid has to face homelessness, no kid has to be forced to choose between their basic kind of livelihood and furthering their education? Because I think we can all agree that's, that's a fundamental right, you know, and nothing should impinge on that, right?
Thank you so much for that. My last question for all of you is supposed to be a more uplifting note. So what is something that you are excited or hopeful about in the next school year? And what is something that the people in this room can do other than just attending a meeting, one of your board meetings, to help out our Sunnyvale schools? We can start on one end and go, this is for all of you.
So, well, thank you to all the voters for supporting our bond measure last year. We're very excited. The bond passed and we've already started some construction. So that is really exciting for us, a big thing that's happening. We have full implementation of transitional kindergarten this year, which means that all four-year-olds, this has been like a three or four-year process where it started with like four-years and like seven months and then four-years and like four months and now it's like all four-year-olds. That's 800 four-year-olds for us, 36 transitional kindergarten classes. You would not imagine the amount of conversations I've had about toilets, little toilets. Or like if we can't get a little toilet, then we have to get stepstools and like guardrails. And so I think like those kinds of things that are happening, they're, they're exciting, they're fun. It's kind of funny that we have to talk about it, but it's a real issue. But we're excited about that. We're getting fencing around all of our campuses, which has been a long time coming. It's been a big security and safety issue for us and so that should be finished by the end of this year. We are getting solar panels at each of our campuses and so you should be seeing EV chargers that will be open to the community after school is done. Of course, priority goes to our staff members first during the school, during the school day. And then in terms of what else you can be doing to support the schools in Sunnyvale, you know, if there are things that you want to come help that, we are always looking for volunteers. I will say, on a personal note, I am now a Sunnyvale resident. I just moved to Sunnyvale this summer and so I'm excited you now have a Sunnyvale representative on the Cupertino school board. So please come and talk to me if you have any concerns about specific schools in Sunnyvale that you want to talk about.
Well, first of all, welcome to Sunnyvale. Okay, so three things I'm excited and hopeful about in the near future. So one of them is something I alluded to before, which is becoming community-funded or basic aid, which put bluntly means we're going to have a larger pool of resources and funds to draw on, which is a big deal for us because like Cupertino, again, for a long time, we were the only community college district in the area that was not basic aid. So we felt kind of like the kid who stuck at home on summer break, watching all his friends like go do cool stuff because we were watching, you know, like West Valley Mission College do really interesting and innovative things that we just didn't have the opportunity to do because we didn't have the funding. And so I'm not saying that we're just, you know, printing money and we're going to be able to do everything we want, unfortunately, but it opens up a lot of opportunities that I'm really excited about. Another thing, and this alludes more to what I was talking about in terms of the, the impact of the White House's policies, and this is something we're actually spearheading at Foothill Deansha, so I'm very excited about this. But we're working with the other Bay Area community colleges to organize a sort of mutual aid compact. I'm, I'm an IR and foreign policy professor, so I'm thinking of it as a community college NATO. You don't have to use that terminology if you don't want to, but basically what it means is if the administration comes after one of our colleges, one of our students, one of our faculty, we all as a unit stand up and say, we're going to fight back against that. And I think that's really important because we've seen, you know, with Harvard, with Yale, with other institutions, it's a process of picking them off one by one. And so if we're able to stand up and say, you're not going to be able to do that to us here in California, right? If you pick on one of us, you're picking on all of us. I think that's going to make a big difference. And the last thing I want to talk about is our Sunnyvale campus, our Foothill Sunnyvale campus up in North Sunnyvale. A lot of folks don't know about this. It's a very recent development, just in the last couple of years. It's up and running now, we've got about 1,600 students. Our EMT program is there, a few other programs are coming there, but it's still currently very much underutilized, the property that we have there. So one thing I'm really excited and hopeful about is how can we use that campus to address some of the, some of those longstanding educational inequities that we've had up in North Sunnyvale? And Pat mentioned this, Peggy talked a bit about this. And so I'm very much excited about how we can be part of the solution, some of those inequities, using that Sunnyvale campus because I think it's a huge opportunity.
I alluded to this earlier, I'm super, super excited about phone-free campuses. It was a year or so in the making to get us to this point with the rollout. We engaged with students and the community to kind of craft a policy around this, this, this thing. And so their pouches, they're, you put them in, you put the phone, you're... And so, it, their pouches, their, you put them in, you put the phone, your, your buds, your watch, anything electronic in the pouch and it magnetizes shut. Every teacher has a demagnetizer and there are various spots around the campuses of different schools that, that have them. If there's an emergency, they can be opened. If there's a teacher that wants a student to use their phone for instruction, they can be opened. But we worked really closely with our, we have a student senate with representatives from all of our secondary schools. And they helped us kind of pull the student body. And it was actually their recommendation to have a completely phone-free day. Administration was willing to do a phone-free brunch and lunch. But the students wanted totally phone-free. They wanted to encourage participation in lunch events, especially on our high school campuses. And they're hoping that no phones will encourage students who might otherwise be too shy to participate, to participate in activities. Because they, a lot of kids are afraid of being videotaped and then put on the internet. And we've had a lot of instances of cyber bullying with, with, with things happening where embarrassing situations end up on, on recording and then they're uploaded to Instagram. We've also had instances of fights on campuses between students that get videotaped by students and then uploaded to Instagram. So, we're hoping that this will encourage kind of community building and safer campuses. We can't eradicate bullying, obviously, but if it helps at least a little bit to, to build community and, and have our students see each other as people, as opposed to, oh, I'm gonna get a lot of clicks on this if I, if I record, you know, this girl dancing, you know, and she looks kinda, you know, dumb or whatever the slang is now, I can't keep up. But, so, we're hoping that that will help. And, okay, I'm almost done. What was the second part of the question?
Something people in the room can do to help?
Oh, be aware when you're driving around school areas, especially in the morning and in the afternoon. Just try not to drive distracted, try to follow the speed limit, you know, look for pedestrians and bicyclists and scooters and skateboards and and, and just slow down and be present when you're in your car. We've had a lot of, well, not a lot, but we've had a number of incidents where students have been hit by, by cars crossing intersections on their way to school. So, please just be aware and be, pay attention. Thanks.
Right, oh yes, it's working. So, what am, what am I really excited that the district has already been doing? Is the, I, I think students, everything having to do with students. I am a teacher and that's kind of like where I get tunnel vision, what is this doing for our students? So, we have been working on wellness centers. Where students have an opportunity to just figure themselves out for a minute, if they're having a moment where they need to just breathe and let things go for a minute and just check in with somebody who's not gonna ask them about their grade or about the relationship that they're, you know, stressing over. It's a place where they can go and just distance themselves a little bit from the noisiness that we carry in our heads. I think that that is telling our students that we as a district are paying attention and we want their well, their wellbeing to be integral. Not just the food that we serve them and the sports that we encourage them to play and provide spaces for, but also the spaces for their social emotional wellbeing. As a teacher of languages, I'm very excited about moving the discourse that we use when we're referring to students and families into a more positive just exception of language. So, the word stakeholders irritates me to no end, you wouldn't believe that every time I see it on one of our policies, I just kind of have to take a step back. So, educational partners is which we should be quoting. And there is now, since last year, an effort by the district to look more within ourselves, to see how we are treating people. And there, I'm very excited because the students have an academy, it's called Race Equity Student Leadership Academy. And that went on for last year and we're excited about the work that they did because, like we were hearing, bullying is a thing, it's not something that we are going to ignore, like it's not happening. How we react to that and how we empower our students to speak up, how we empower the adults in the room to also say, this, this is not something we do here, or how can I help you to do things differently? Putting it at the level of students is really something that I'm proud of. And I did raise my hand and say, can we do something with the adults in the board, on the boardroom? And like, so, I was very happy to hear that, yes, it is going to then move on to other people who are not one-on-one with the students or in the classroom with the students, but are making decisions on behalf of the students, as are the trustees on the board. So, I'm very excited about that. And anything that has to do with students just gets me excited. So, talking to them, listening to them, what can you do? Board meetings are not exactly known as like, you know, popcorn, let's watch and get engaged and, you know, like, this is so exciting. But you can kind of connect with us and tell us how to do our jobs better, how to serve students better and write to us and if you can, come and join us. I mean, everybody who, who's been to the boardroom just kind of gets mesmerized at the environment, they say, wow, this is a wonderful boardroom. So, come and enjoy it with us and come and help us do our job better for students. Thank you.
For Sunnyvale School District, I'm also excited about centering students. Celebrating adults who, who serve students while having more student voices. We will have students coming into the boardroom and doing the pledge of allegiance, leaving the pledge, as well as, you know, saying the land acknowledgement. Overall, like the bigger umbrella that I'm very excited about is communication. One of, I think, on his first day, Dr. Crossway created an Instagram account, right? And it's just like a welcoming message to us. But throughout the summer, we've been receiving messages a few days after, a day after perhaps, he sent out some communication about the Supreme Court decision about Muhammad versus Taylor and how this is something that is important to us, that we are going, that we are going to be thinking, that we actually have a governance meeting. We'll be talking about it on Thursday if you'd like to join that conversation. But having that communication with the public, understanding that we are partners in our students' education. Again, like elevating the student voices, we, we've seen like a nutritional, five-day nutritional reel by our nutrition services person who we'd never really seen like online. And she was just giving recipes on what we could do as parents at home, it was really cool, it was like one of those, you know, like one of those videos where she's adding all the ingredients and really exciting. We just recently had a short video celebrating our custodial staff that's been working really hard over the summer. So, I'm really excited about the increased communication. That also means, you know, at the board level, in our meetings, just more transparency, which also will mean more accountability for our leaders. And just making sure that our students are centered in our decisions, you know? And for those that we are not serving as well as we should, what can we do more? Having that curiosity to think in that way and to innovate. I'm very excited about that. And finally, I want to also mention that kind of we'll be revisiting our instructional framework and delivering the delivery of instruction and having more clarity around whose job it is to do what, in what way, you know? And I think just more clarity at the organizational level will result in more student success. And if it doesn't, then we need to, you know, shift again and just having that mindset where we can't be complacent with what's happening, what has been, and just thinking about how we can improve.
Well, that's the end of the questions that I have prepared. We had planned to take a short break, just to kind of everybody stretch their legs if they'd like. And then, I think, can we be back by thirty-five for questions from the audience?
So, while we take a break in the room here, something I forgot about in the announcements and that we covered at a previous meeting was the project on Tasman for a, you know, a bike lane or a bike ped lane. So, our board member Charlene is gonna give us an update on what happened with that, so.
Just a quick update on that, so Tasman today does not have bicycle or pedestrian facilities in that area between Fair Oaks and Lawrence where several thousand residents live. So, it's hard for the residents, like it's impossible really for the residents to get out and walk to the grocery store or walk to school or bike to school or get to the public transportation that's nearby. So, what council voted on last month was to put in a multi-use path on both sides of Tasman so that pedestrians and cyclists can go both directions on both sides of the street. So, that was very good, it makes access for people so much better and it does not, should not impact car traffic. So, we're very happy with that. Thanks.
Well, there's always one more thing. And I forgot, I got so excited about our fourth decade, I forgot to announce that our school starts, Leadership Sunnyvale starts in September. So, anybody who is interested in doing that, please get in touch with us right away. Thank you.
Our landlord decided to move back into his house. We've been renters for a while. Yeah, so we were renting a house in San Jose, West San Jose for fifteen years. And then that owner was elderly, he didn't care, he wanted to move out of the house. We moved right at the beginning of the pandemic to another house in San Jose. And then, that owner, eleven months in, decided to move back into his house. So, then we had to look for another place in the middle of the pandemic. At that time, it was, it was a renters paradise.
Right.
Because everybody, everybody had moved out, all these rental houses were sort of empty. So, we found this, we got this tiny house in Cupertino that had been sitting empty for six months, we reduced the rent by like a thousand dollars already and then we negotiated for even more or even, even less of a rent. So, we lived there for the last four years, because I've only been in Cupertino for four years. And then, and then, he's also, he's like eighty-four, he fell and his hip. But his kids wanted him to move back into the house so that he could be on a one level thing. So, he gave us notice in May. And then we looked at twenty-one places in ten days. And that, the duplex in Sunnyvale, literally around the corner, inside of Texas, but actually a community center.
Near Remington.
Yes, right off Remington and Mannet.
Yeah, Manay.
Manay.
Oh, okay, I know that neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, it's nice. It's nice, it's good because we're empty nesting now anyways, so it seems like it was good for us to downsize and I'm excited to be in Sunnyvale.
So, it's a rent, again, you're renting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're never empty. I don't think we'll ever, yeah, we'll afford.
Yeah, I see, yeah, when you're renting, you're sort of at the, you know, the whim of the landlord.
We are, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool, so glad you're near us now.
Yeah, no, I'm excited. And I, I turned fifty this year.
Oh, you're young, I'm about to turn sixty.
Oh, wow. You don't look, you don't look it at all. So, but because I turned fifty, we qualify for the senior center.
Oh, good.
So, we walked over and joined the senior center.
So, you get, they serve lunch every day.
Yeah, 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 I picked up the lunch the other day.
Field trip, I heard they, their, their most popular one is to go to Fleet Week in San Francisco. Yeah, and that's coming up in October.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm excited to, I'm excited to become a part of Sunnyvale, I'm excited to be in a new neighborhood.
Right, yeah, and P U S B is not viable, so it doesn't matter.
It's the same.
Yeah. So, you're actually, that gives you all this experience, living in different parts of the school district, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is nice because I feel like, oh, it's, you know, like, it's like, oh, this safely is different from my safely.
Yeah.
So, it's just all those new things that we're learning.
Right, and I thought the, did the demographics change a bit too?
Yeah.
Hmm, interesting.
Yeah. But it's nice, there's actually children on my street.
Oh.
It's nice, because the last couple places we lived, new kids, all people that are already, their kids are already grown.
Interesting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, everyone, it's the time I said, let's see if we can get everybody to come back to their seats. One, two, three, eyes on me. Can we get everybody to go back to their seats so we can start the next portion?
All right, we'll start in the room, are there any questions in the room for our lovely panel?
Thank you so much for the thoughtful questions and answers and I learn a lot and I really appreciate how its school district does for immigrant students and families, it was very helpful information, the webinar, Sunnyvale School District, I'm planning to attend and thank you. And I have, I'm also on the Fremont Union High School District with Pat, I mean, Mr., I mean, Trustee Carpio. I have two questions. First, so, Trustee Carpio also mentioned about the Wellness Center, so thank you for that. And our school district is committed to having Wellness Center at all of our high schools. And three of them already have and we're working on for Homestead High School. But many of grants are temporary, like two years and temporary period. And we are committed, but we are still, I mean, seeking the funding for, for, I mean, for maintaining the Wellness Center. So, if your school district has Wellness Center, and what is the funding source and how do you find the resources for Wellness Center? That's number one question. And number two question is, our high school district have about ten percent English learners. And English learners is one of the groups actually needs, you know, extra support. And I'm wondering how your district is working to support English learners, with targeted kind of approach? I mean, it'd be great to learn from your school districts.
Is there anyone who'd like to start?
So, in Cupertino, we also have wellness centers at our middle schools. We did receive a grant from the county to be one of the pilot programs and so that was really, really helpful. We are going back to the county to ask if they will continue to, to fund that, although, you know, they, they have their own budget challenges as well. Really, when it comes to the Wellness Centers, what we're talking about in terms of funding, isn't the room, it's the staff, right? It's, it's about the school psychologist or the counselor and the amount of time that they can spend there. So for most of our middle schools, the, the room itself, like the, the, you know, the things that are in there, the beanbag chairs, the music, the library books, those kinds of things. We usually have great partnerships with PTA or, or the parent group that will, will fund those things. And then, right now, we're able to fund our school psychologists with some of the funding that we have. But again, it is tentative. So in terms of a long-term plan, we, it's really wait and see. Yeah. And then, I'm sorry, the second question was about English learners. And so for us, again, with that Title III money specifically, Title III is divided into two categories. So it is, the English learners is one section of it, and then the immigrant funding is the other section of it. And so English learners right now is still being funded, which is good. Immigrant is not for next year. So for this year, we're okay. And for next year, it's, it's kind of, again, a wait and see to see what happens. Program-wise, we're, we're doing some, something called Benchmark, Benchmark Education. So this is a specific curriculum for immigrant English, for English learners to help them with just leveling and being able to do some of this. So, so the way that when you're categorized as an English learner is you have to meet certain levels. And then you can be taken out of that category. And so to be able to have some, like, using the same words over and over again, benchmarking, to, to be able to help assess better and just be able to, to mark that progress. So I think that, that for us is at risk if we can't get funding for that.
So in Santa Clara Unified, we have Wellness Centers at all of our high schools and middle schools. And then our elementary schools have kind of, they, if they want to have us use their site funds to create a wellness area for their students, they, they can do that. But we don't, we don't have like official Wellness Centers at our elementary schools. But I know there are elementary schools that have kind of quiet areas where students can come. And if they need to kind of decompress, there are kind of, there are beanbag chairs and, you know, coloring stations and just things that will kind of re-center students for however long they need to be in there. Like Sylvia said, we did get a grant from the county to, to fund that work. But we also have budgeted funds that go to paying for school psychologists, wellness coordinators, people that can staff those, those areas. They're not solely dedicated to a campus. They rotate because it's just, it's cost prohibitive to have, you know, each high school have a full staff of Wellness people. But we do offer the services to our students. And then Oh, I'm, I'm paying attention today or something. I don't know. So we just adopted M-Class Dibbles as a phonics program for our K2 student, TK2 students. We, and I don't, I don't want to like start a whole conversation on science of reading. But there was, there's a large debate in, in education right now about the best way to teach reading to students. And so we have kind of, now have kind of an integrated approach. We're, we're using balanced literacy. So we, we adopted M-Class Dibbles. It's our first year with a phonics program. And we're hoping it will help improve our literacy scores in our early education. But we also use Benchmark for reclassifying our English language learners. Our goal, and I'm, I'm sure every district's goal, is to re-class our students as quickly as possible. And that, that requires, you know, a, a lot of, a lot of staffing, a lot of teacher dedication to getting our students able to pass the LPAC, which is the test they have to take to, to, to get certified as an English, as English fluent. And so those are kind of the things that we're doing right now. And hopefully we'll get good data back and, and see positive results from, from those.
I don't know if I'm supposed to answer this question, but I will elaborate a little bit because multilinguals, that's what I've done in the United States for 20 years now. I will not speak on, like, either of the districts, the one that I work on or the one that I serve, but I do want to clarify some things for people in the audience who are listening at home. Why this is such a critical factor in education is when you, in your demographic survey that you take, well, not you, the child, but the parent and caregiver, specify that there is another language other than English spoken at home, you are by default then going to be taking a series of tests to qualify that you are competent enough in English to take certain courses. And that's what we refer to as reclassification when you are competent enough. But it doesn't happen just organically. You have to take tests. And these tests, one of them is the LPAC, and the other one is the state test. And you have to score passing. There's four levels on the LPAC. And you have to score a grade level on the CASP. And that's a, that's a huge burden because there has been research that has showed that if you are a fourth grader and you take the LPAC and you have been nothing but an English-only household, as they're called, you might not pass it. That's how stringent the test is. And if you are coming from a culture that is not being portrayed on the test, your answers might be definitive. Like, I don't know that. I don't, my family's never golfed, or I've never done tennis, or things like that. And so it worries me that we are looking for resources, which we should. But we're also creating the problem to need these resources because some students, because they are very proud of the fact that they speak an additional language at home, their family puts that on there culturally, they feel very connected. And then this becomes sort of like a hurdle now to get into high school and take the A through G requirements that you need in order to graduate and aspire to higher ed. And it just becomes this kind of enveloping hurricane that you wonder, how did I get here? Or some parents, like, how did I get this test? Or, you know, this notice of my student is not yet competent in English, when the only person that speaks another language at home is grandma, and we love that. And so this is a state issue that we have to look at a little bit more, but it does have a big weight on the shoulders of students. And if we talk about long-term English learners, which the state just barely gave the first result data point last year, that's a whole nother conversation because that's somebody who's never been outside of the United States. And we have turned them into somebody who doesn't know English on, you know, data points. So that's just, I, I want to say something like that because it's, it's where I'm very concerned that the policies that we're creating at state level and county level, at the district level, and the way we're communicating them to families may be a disservice and disingenuous about how that impacts them in the long run. I'll get off my soapbox then.
We are specifically putting you on a soapbox right now. Are there any other questions from the audience at this point?
Hi, so I'm Linda Sell and I'm a Sunnyvale Vice Mayor. But I'm here talking in my own capacity. But I was just wondering, some of your schools are, your school districts cross over different cities and in Sunnyvale. Are there like best practices that you see in other cities that you wish were in Sunnyvale? Are there good things in Sunnyvale that you want to lift up?
One of, one of the things that I would love to see Sunnyvale join is safe routes to school. And I think Sylvia referenced that earlier. Santa Clara does a wonderful job with safe routes with their, through their police department. And every year they do with the Safety Patrol and they do a graduation for the fifth graders in, in Safety Patrol. And it's a kind of a big, big to-do. And it really helps with kind of filling the gap of, of crossing guards because I know there's, there's, we don't have enough crossing guards. And having the Safe Routes to School program is, is very beneficial to our students. So I would love it if the city of Sunnyvale would, would join that program because it's highly effective at our Santa Clara schools.
I, I also would like that. Safe routes to school and cycling to school and walking to school, something I care very much about. And I do hope that we can replicate something that's already been done and that it's working well. And we're from there. I also want to elevate something that we have seen, that does not have to do with getting safely to school, but with access and communication, that we have seen work well and have taken at the Fremont Union High School District. We say un pétalo de tu fleur, like a petal from your flower, is this AI Wordly app that helps people listen to a meeting in the language of their preference, in the language that they feel most comfortable, or the language that they love and want to hear more of. And I, I consistently do that for myself when I'm on the dais. I turn it on into Spanish so that I can find out if it still needs some learning. And it usually does, and the glossary can expand. And it consistently says that I'm male because it doesn't know that I'm not. But in, in Spanish, you have male and female gender. And I, I turned it into French last time to check out my French. And I'm like, there it goes again. It doesn't distinguish gender. But still, I think that if we can continue to do that, I know that human interpreters also can do this. But what I like about Wordly, and we took that from Sunnyvale City Council, is that it has a, just a wide variety of languages. And you can do that either auditorily. It's kind of, it sounds robotic, kind of metallic auditorily, but you can read it and you can create then an archive of the words that, you know, what was spoken. And so I really wish that we as our, our own district can now start publishing our board meetings, not only in the language in which they are spoken, but in any of the languages that Wordly offers, because then you're reaching more people. And I don't know if other folks are using it. I know that human interpreters are kind of the default, but that's just one language.
I just wanted to quickly say, it is purposely robotic for Wordly because the standard for interpretation is for interpreters to not add their own emotion to a speaker. So it is on purpose, according to Wordly.
So one thing that CUSD does with a couple other cities is something called a two-by-two. So with the city of Kuputino, we have a two-by-two committee. So two of us on the board and two council members. And we meet twice a year just to, and it's usually attended by, you know, also like the city manager and our superintendent. It's a chance to update each other on what's happening in the districts and in the schools. We do it with Los Altos as well. Los Altos has a two-by-two. It would be great to, to have something with Sunnyvale like that, where we have two council members and two board members. Saratoga does a thing where they do a state of the schools and they invite all of the school districts that serve the city of Saratoga. And we come and we give an update to city council. So I think some of those things that, that are happening in some of the other cities that we have have been like really positive. So if there's opportunities to engage more with the city of Sunnyvale, I think we will all be very excited for that.
I want to mention that we did start two-by-twos. We only are two-by-two by two with the high school district as well. We've only had one meeting, but we did take that cue from you all. So that's been really great. And we will have a state of the district in October. Thank you.
I just, oh, hold on. I just want to tack on to hers. We would love to have a liaison with the city. We have a city liaison committee with the city of Sun, with city of Santa Clara that meets monthly. We would love to do the same with Sunnyvale, particularly since Laurelwood is moving into the city from Santa Clara. So we're going to have an additional campus. We would love to, to have a city liaison committee with Sunnyvale.
Wow, great. All these ideas. Great.
I'm going to say something you probably never thought you'd hear a college professor say, which is, I'm a big believer in plagiarism. If there's a good idea, another jurisdiction is putting into practice, I think we should wholeheartedly steal it and do it where we're at. And so I talked about how now that we're basic aid, we're able to do some of the things that we were previously watching other college districts do. That's really forward-thinking, innovative. And one that stands out for me is West Valley Mission recently rolled out a universal lunch program, which I think is fantastic. And I think we should really be looking at. We have a few different resources to address food insecurity for students at Fodil Dianza. We have a food pantry, which is great, of course. But if you look at the outcomes of sort of these voluntary opt-in programs versus universal programs, it makes a huge difference because it takes the stigma out of it. Right? If you're a college student and you're food insecure, right, you need to go to the food pantry, you might not go because you don't want to be seen as, you know, the needy student who, you know, has to go to the food pantry. But if you're rolling out a universal lunch program, that guarantees every single student at least eats that day, right? And it doesn't matter, you know, your income level, it doesn't matter who you are, you're going to get something to eat. So that's something that I'd really want to look at, that another jurisdiction is doing that I might want to bring to Fodil Dianza.
Thank you.
I think we have time for one more question.
I didn't think I was going to ask a question. My name is Guy Johnson, long-term Sunnyvale resident. I went to Bennett Elementary, which is now a high-rise condo complex. I went to Patrick Henry Junior High, which is some dental campus. I went to Peterson High School, which is a junior high school, and graduated from San Jose State. My question is to educators, I grew up with an extremely strong arts and music educational program in Sunnyvale School District and Santa Clara Unified. And sadly saw it obliterated over the years. When I was in junior high school, I remember watching the marching band at Peterson High School with over 356 kids. Four years later, when I graduated, there were 56 kids in the marching band. I was one of several students selected in second grade to attend an arts program, summer program, with $50 or arts supplies back in 19 something, 70 something. It was a lot of money back then. And got to come back and create my own art exhibit at the Unified Santa Clara Unified School District. So my question is, and I look at the state of Texas where they have equal funding for equal projects, and they've got huge marching bands and dance groups. What are we doing, if anything, in Santa Clara and Sunnyvale Unified to bring back the strong arts and education program that we used to have so strongly here in the city of Sunnyvale? And we could brag about it and proudly say we're from the city of Sunnyvale.
Hello? Okay. I also strongly believe in arts and music education. And this is an area where we are lacking, and it breaks my heart. As a board, we have, I think unanimously, asked the district to look into comprehensive performing arts, or arts in general, sorry, education. And that is forthcoming. Right now, we only have music, like, the opportunity to learn an instrument outside of the class day at four elementary schools because the parent groups are able to supplement that. And I don't think that's right. So that is very much a need. I think that we do need to lean into community partnerships. We actually don't have visual arts this year at all, which is also shocking. And so we will need to lean into community partnerships at least this year as we develop in our district. And this is something that I feel very strongly about. And encourage anybody watching to also contribute to Sunnyvale Education Foundation. This is an area where we contribute a lot.
So are, we have a new school, actually. Well, it's not a new school, but it's been reimagined. So Don Calijohn was a K12, K8 school out in Rivermark in Santa, Santa Clara. And it's been redesigned as an art and design school. So it's a, it's an open enrollment school for families that want to have their child attend a school that's, that provides a traditional K12, K8 education, but also has an art design focus. So we, we do have that. It's, I think it's in its second year this year with that new focus. All of our elementary schools have music programs. They don't all have a dedicated teacher. It's a kind of a rotating teacher that goes to all of the different elementary schools. But we are able to provide instruments for any student that wants to participate in music. It's an opt-in, starting in third grade. Um, it's an opt-in, um, starting in third grade. Um, so it's not something that every student does, but it is an opt-in. Most of the time, if it's kind of, um, visual arts, that's provided for by our PTAs because we don't, we don't, just don't have the budget for, for art classes. Unfortunately, when it's time for budget cuts, the, the first thing to go is, is budget, budgeted funds for art. Um, so, um, so our, a lot of our PTAs provide art education, um, through Starting Arts or other similar nonprofits that, that come in and provide the, the education for kids. Um, but that's kind of hit and miss depending on how, um, strong the PTA is, um, the population, whether or not they're able to fundraise. It's, it's, it's completely inequitable. Um, and so Prop 28 was kind of passed by the, the state a few years back for arts education. That was supposed to try to help fund arts in K-12 education. Um, but it's still not enough money to, to do, to really do it right. So it, it really does, as Peggy said, it, you know, you need your school's foundations, you need donations to, to make this work. But, so the things we're able to do are really drops in the bucket, um, to, to have a real impact with arts. Um, and, and I'm, I completely agree with you. I mean, I, I STEAM with, with the A in there, not just STEM, but STEAM with arts, you know, really kind of inspires innovation and creativity and helps with just centering our kids to learn. Um, and so it's unfortunate that art has taken such a hit, but, but those are the things that we're doing. Well, I want to say thank you to the members of our panel for taking the time and thank you for those great questions. And that's going to wrap it up for us.
All right, well, that concludes our meeting. Thank you all for, uh, again, thanks to the panel and, uh, thanks to Jesse for doing a fantastic job moderating this and Ambrosia, who, uh, kind of brought all this together. And, uh, and I also want to thank our board who somehow manages to do a, a live and hybrid meeting every time. It's a miracle, uh, and occasionally works. So, uh, thank you all, we'll see you next month.